And welcome to the regular meeting of the Irving City Council for June 12th, 2025. It's a pleasure to have each and every one of you with us this evening. Sinead, do we have any organizational or service announcements?
Yes, Mayor, we do, and it is Jen Landry. Jen, you have three minutes.
Hold on one second. I don't think we have the microphone on yet. Is there a red button?
How's that? All right. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen, city leadership and residents. I'm Jennifer Landry, Director of Museums for the Department of Arts and Culture. In honor of the Juneteenth holiday, I invite you to visit the newly renovated Jackie Townsill Bear Creek Heritage Center. Juneteenth commemorates the day in 1865 when enslaved people in Texas were informed of their freedom, more than two years after the Emancipation Proclamation. The Bear Creek Heritage Center, located in one of Texas's oldest freedmen communities, will be open to the public on Thursday, June 19th, and Saturday, June 21st, from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. Admission is free, and we would be honored to welcome you to the Heritage Center to explore our new exhibitions. Thank you.
Okay. If you would please stand, the invocation this evening is going to be given by Rabbi Frank Joseph of Irving, Havana.
Eloheinu ve'loha v'otenu. Our God, and God of our fathers, we come together this evening as an extremely diverse but united community with an overflowing abundance of gratitude, as we are every single day of our lives. We are extremely grateful for all the countless blessings that you have bestowed upon us all. We are extremely grateful for our families, our friends, our health, our occupations, our hobbies, our opportunities, the gift and wonderful blessing of our community, and the wonderful continual possibilities that you, oh God, provide for us all. As we are about to celebrate our country's independence, we are especially grateful and blessed to have the privilege of being Americans and living in a country that has ideally, through the noblest ideals, striven to guarantee many things, among them, freedom of religion, speech, the press, lawful assembly, and encourages treasures and eagerly embraces diversity. We are especially blessed to live in a country that continually strives to make the welfare and well-being of all of its citizens, no matter what race, ethnic background, or economic status its highest priority. The model for all civic involvement is found in the 29th chapter of the biblical verse of Jeremiah. "Seek the peace of the city where I have caused you to dwell and pray to the Lord for it; for in the peace thereof you shall experience peace." Our religious tradition has taught us for centuries and still continues to teach us to never separate yourselves from the needs of your community, but instead make it a priority to become actively involved in your communal needs. It is in this spirit, oh God, that we ask your blessings upon the wonderful, selfless, dedicated leaders of our blessed city of Irving. We ask your blessings upon our community leaders, our elected officials, who selflessly and continuously give of their time, their energy, their experience, their insight, their sincere love and devotion on behalf of us all. Bless them, oh God, sustain them, always continually be with them in all of their endeavors. Let all their selfless works and projects bear fruit. My family and I absolutely love having the opportunity, pleasure, and privilege of residing in the city of Irving, Texas. As a result of the efforts of our communal leaders, Irving, Texas continues to be the winning combination of everything, and as a result of the continual work of our civic leaders, our beloved cities continue to grow, and it continues to flourish in every area, south, east, west, and north. As our beloved, beloved Mayor Rick Stouffer stated at this year's State of the City address that my wife Lori and I were very privileged to attend, "Irving, Texas is a city which we can reside, work, and play in. All our recreational, dining, musical, cultural, and educational needs are provided for." We are extremely grateful for our incredible police and fire departments, our wonderful parks, libraries, and schools. It is also a wonderful pleasure and privilege to be a part of the Interfaith Alliance of Irving, where individuals of all faiths and multicultural backgrounds come together to work on projects benefiting all the residents of Irving. The wonderful diversity and inclusion of all races' creeds in our city enriches us all. As a result of our talented, vibrant, and committed leadership today, we are excited to see the amazing future that awaits our beloved city. In closing, oh God, we ask your continual blessings upon us all. May we both as individuals and as a community continue to grow from strength to strength. We will conclude with the priestly blessing first conferred upon the ancient Israelites 3,500 years ago. We ask you, oh God, to confer these blessings to all who are assembled here this evening. Yivarechacha Adonai viishmurecha, may the Lord bless you and protect you. Ya'air Adonai pana ve'lecha ve'chunecha, may the Lord deal kindly and graciously with you. Yisah Adonai pana ve'lecha ve'asemlecha, shalom. May the Lord bestow his favor upon you and grant you peace. And may God bless us all with long, happy, healthy, prosperous, peaceful, meaningful, fulfilling lives. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi. At this time, if you remain standing, Councilman Webb will lead us in the pledges.
You join me in the pledge to the American flag and the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Dennis. Sinead, at this time, we have public comments. Do we have residents who would like to speak?
We do, Mayor. Public comments provide the opportunity to our citizens to address the council on items that are not listed on the regular agenda. The council will listen, but they will not respond as they are restricted from deliberation by the Texas Open Meeting Act. While the mayor and council may not respond, you are welcome to contact them directly. Their phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, and a meeting can be requested. If your comments require a response, the follow-up will be handled by the communications team. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. I will let you know when one minute is left. Please state your name and address prior to your comments, and a professional presentation is requested. Any handouts you wish to provide to the council members should be given to the police officers on either side of the chamber. Please do not approach the dais. Our first speaker is Mr. Anthony Vaughn, followed by Mr. Steve Goen.
Anthony Vaughn, 4109 West North Gate, number 821, Irving, Texas, 75062. I titled my remarks, Dennis Webb gave me this title, "Keep Irving United." I'm going to add this to it without lies. I'm here to respond to what we've just gone through in this election. I've lived here in Irving for 37 years. I've never seen anything like it. I got two messages sent to me today, and it's going to, these two messages are going to tell you a whole bunch about what's going on on this council right now and what we're still facing. One says, "A pro-Israel international summit event that was to be held in Dallas today had to be canceled due to the terroristic threats. Now is the chance for our Irving City Council to step up and gain national fame coming to the rescue on this. We can provide our Jewish friends with secure event venue they need here in Irving, and this show will go on as it should. Many famous speakers and politicians from all over the world were supposed to attend this event that was to be broadcast live. Our mayor and David Pfaff are in a perfect position to act on this and save the day for everybody." It goes on to say, "Sergio Perez has no chance or any political future around here because he and his group have been labeled as anti-Semites by our Jewish community, and that is a kiss of death for any political leader in America. I urge our city council to please help. They're called the Israel guys, staged their international event here in Irving." The next one was, "Anyone else wondering why Irving City Council emergency resolutions that were hurriedly put forth on Memorial Day?"
One minute left.
"...put forth for the following Thursday by Councilman Luis Canosa, supported by Mueller and Block Arnold, the agenda for tonight's meeting? Why not? I mean, if these resolutions were so important, but now they apparently aren't. Was this a political ploy to gain the Muslim votes? Only the ones responsible for this can answer this question. This election has done irreparable harm to our city. I want to apologize on behalf of all the citizens that I've heard from, to our city manager, Chris Helmer, to our city attorney, K O., to our city secretary, Sinead Conley, to all the people on the fourth floor who have been bullied and threatened during this election. That is not what Irving City Council leaders should do, those on the council currently and those wanting to be on it.
Thank you, Anthony. Steve Goen, followed by Nikisha McDaniel.
Honorable Mayor, City Manager, City Council.
Especially blessed to live in a country that continually strives to make the welfare and well-being of all of its citizens, no matter what race, ethnic background, or economic status its highest priority. The model for all civic involvement is found in the 29th chapter of the biblical verse of Jeremiah. Seek the peace of the city where I have caused you to dwell and pray to the Lord for it, for in the peace thereof you shall experience peace. Our religious tradition has taught us for centuries and still continues to teach us to never separate yourselves from the needs of your community, but instead make it a priority to become actively involved in your communal needs. It is in this spirit, oh God, that we ask your blessings upon the wonderful, selfless, dedicated leaders of our blessed city of Irving. We ask your blessings upon our community leaders, our elected officials, who selflessly and continuously give of their time, their energy, their experience, their insight, their sincere love and devotion on behalf of us all. Bless them, oh God, sustain them, always continually be with them in all of their endeavors. Let all their selfless works and projects bear fruit. My family and I absolutely love having the opportunity, pleasure, and privilege of residing in the city of Irving, Texas. As a result of the efforts of our communal leaders, Irving, Texas continues to be the winning combination of everything. And as a result of the continual work of our civic leaders, our beloved cities continues to grow and it continues to flourish in every area, south, east, west, and north. As our beloved, beloved mayor, Rick Stouffer stated at this year's State of the City address that my wife Lori and I were very privileged to attend, Irving, Texas is a city which we can reside, work, and play in. All our recreational, dining, musical, cultural, and educational needs are provided for. We are extremely grateful for our incredible police and fire departments, our wonderful parks, libraries, and schools. It is also a wonderful pleasure and privilege to be a part of the Interfaith Alliance of Irving, where individuals of all faiths and multicultural backgrounds come together to work on projects benefiting all the residents of Irving. The wonderful diversity and inclusion of all races' creeds in our city enriches us all. As a result of our talented, vibrant, and committed leadership today, we are excited to see the amazing future that awaits our beloved city. In closing, oh God, we ask your continual blessings upon us all. May we both as individuals and as a community continue to grow from strength to strength. We will conclude with the priestly blessing first conferred upon the ancient Israelites 3,500 years ago. We ask you, oh God, to confer these blessings to all who are assembled here this evening. [speaking in Hebrew]. May the Lord bless you and protect you. [speaking in Hebrew]. May the Lord deal kindly and graciously with you. [speaking in Hebrew]. May the Lord bestow his favor upon you and grant you peace. And may God bless us all with long, happy, healthy, prosperous, peaceful, meaningful, fulfilling lives. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi. At this time, if you remain standing, Councilman Webb will lead us in the pledges.
You join me in the pledge to the American flag and the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On this Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Dennis.
Shanae, at this time, we have public comments. Do we have residents who would like to speak?
We do, Mayor. Public comments provide the opportunity to our citizens to address the council on items that are not listed on the regular agenda. The council will listen, but they will not respond as they are restricted from deliberation by the Texas Open Meeting Act. While the mayor and council may not respond, you are welcome to contact them directly. Their phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, and a meeting can be requested. If your comments require a response, the follow-up will be handled by the communications team. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. I will let you know when one minute is left. Please state your name and address prior to your comments, and a professional presentation is requested. Any handouts you wish to provide to the council members should be given to the police officers on either side of the chamber. Please do not approach the dais. Our first speaker is Mr. Anthony Vaughn, followed by Mr. Steve Goen.
Anthony Vaughn, 4109 West North Gate, number 821, Irving, Texas 75062. Title of my remarks, Dennis Webb gave me this title, Keep Irving United. I'm going to add this to it without lies. I'm here to respond to what we've just gone through in this election. I've lived here in Irving for 37 years. I've never seen anything like it. I got two messages sent to me today, and it's going to, these two messages are going to tell you a whole bunch about what's going on on this council right now and what we're still facing. One says, "A pro-Israel international summit event that was to be held in Dallas today had to be canceled due to the terroristic threats. Now is the chance for our Irving City Council to step up and gain national fame coming to the rescue on this. We can provide our Jewish friends with secure event venue they need here in Irving, and this show will go on as it should." Many famous speakers and politicians from all over the world were supposed to attend this event that was to be broadcast live. Our mayor and David Pfaff are in a perfect position to act on this and save the day for everybody. It goes on to say, "Sergio Perez has no chance or any political future around here because he has, he and his group have been labeled as anti-Semites by our Jewish community, and that is a kiss of death for any political leader in America. I urge our city council to please help. They're called the Israel guys, staged their international event here in Irving." The next one was, anyone else wondering why Irving City Council emergency resolutions that were hurriedly put forth on Memorial Day?
One minute left.
Forth of, put forth from the border for the following Thursday by Councilman Luis Canosa, supported by Mueller and Block, aren't on the agenda for tonight's meeting? Why not? I mean, if these resolutions were so important, but now they apparently aren't. Was this a political ploy to gain the Muslim votes? Only the ones responsible for this can answer this question. This election has done irreparable harm to our city. I want to apologize on behalf of all the citizens that I've heard from, to our city manager, Chris Helmuth, to our city attorney, K O., to our city secretary, Shanae Conley, to all the people on the fourth floor who have been bullied and threatened during this election. That is not what Irving City Council leaders should do, those on the council currently and those wanting to be on it.
Thank you, Anthony. Steve Goen, followed by Nikisha McDaniel.
Honorable mayor, city manager, city council. My name is Steve Goen. I live at 3025 Luzon Road, Irving, Texas 75060. I've lived in my home for 38 and a half years. My wife and I own Glory House Catering Company, which we've owned, which we've been in business for almost 29 years and which we've been, our buildings are on Main Street, and we've owned them for, since 1999. I want to address the homeless problem in Irving with you. Governor Abbott signed into law in 2021, laws that protect citizens from homelessness. Texas House Bill 1925, public and camping. Texas House Bill 3087, peeing and defecating in public. I average cleaning up defecation twice a week by my mural in the back of Glory House Catering, and we spent $6,500 on that mural, and we have pictures and videos of people peeing and pooping on my mural. This is uncalled for. It's wrong. Texas House Bill 3087 is about peeing and defecation. Texas Litter Abatement 365, the homeless are out of control with litter. It's all over. My wife gets, puts on heavy gloves every morning, goes and cleans the leisure plaza with debris that can be thrown in a garbage can, which is three feet away from these homeless people hanging out and loitering in our leisure plaza. Texas Litter Abatement Bill 365, City of Irving E-code 360 24-4, loitering. No person shall sit or stand in any public highway, street, alley, sidewalk, crosswalk, public way, mall, without being able to give good account of himself.
One minute left.
Hanging out in public without a clear purpose or reason for being there, remaining idle in a public place. This is loitering. It's against the law. Texas Penal Code 4201, intentionally knowing disorderly conduct, abusive language, profanity. We've had people screaming at the leisure plaza at the top of their lungs, the F-word, over and over again, and I've seen many customers that were eating their lunch have to leave because of this problem. Please, city council, enforce the laws of this state, enforce the codes of this city, okay? And even the Supreme Court has been involved in this. And the Supreme Court, the United States of America upheld rights of cities to punish people for sleeping outside even if they have nowhere else to go. The court ruled that this is not a violation of the Eighth Amendment, ban or cruel or unusual punishment. The justices of the Supreme Court upheld the law targeting the homeless. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nikisha McDaniel. Followed by Debbie Hack.
Hello, my name is Dr. Nikisha McDaniel. I am the owner of Magnolia Chiropractic, 139 South Main Street here in Irving, and I'm here again to speak about the homeless issue as well. I know you guys have heard us speak. I've been to the revitalization meetings, and until you're in the trenches with this and you deal with it every day, you don't really understand how it impacts our daily business. When he talks about defecation at your front door, it literally happens, and I've had to clean it up three times myself. This is a biohazard, and it is an issue, and that is not something that I should have to deal with when it's on public property. I get it that you guys are working on stuff and you're talking about things you need to do. This has been going on for years. I've been downtown since 2011. That's when I moved to Main Street, and it's been an issue for a long time. We've been physically and verbally accosted multiple times. My patients have been, you know, same thing, verbally accosted, and they, and I understand, I understand it's an issue, and I understand that they need help. And I'm, I've offered help, we've all offered help. Here is my solution. I don't come and bring problems without offering at least somewhat of a solution. You know, my idea is we need to have some type of task force down there, someone to call when this issue arises. The affidavits that you've had assigned has been wonderful, and that's helped because police can come when they're on my property and they can arrest them for trespassing, or at least shoo them away for a while. The trash, the needles, the razor blades that I've picked up, it is an issue. How would you feel when you got home tonight if you had to step over someone else's mess to get in your front door? How would that make you feel? And what would you want to do? And who would you call? Because it's your home, right? This is a problem that I've had. So what I'm asking of you guys is to just put it on the forefront, and I know you guys are working on it, but we need some solutions now, right? We need just to know that we are making some action steps. Now, I want to call out Jason Neal, who has been a godsend. He has been wonderful. When I reach out to him, he comes, he brought the cameras there, he had some great solutions to help us and Glory House. So I know we're taking steps in the right direction, but we need to do more than move benches. We need to have someone there 24/7 to help police the problem and then also help clean up the problem, right? And then obviously, if there's shelters and things that you want, guys want to discuss in the future, that's fine. I'm here to speak for the businesses in downtown. I'm also here to speak for the future businesses that are going to want to come to Irving, but they don't because of the problem that we have down there. So if you would, take this into consideration again. The squeaky wheel always gets the oil, and I'm here to be the squeaky wheel. I appreciate all your attention. I appreciate the work that you are doing. I'm here to lock arms with you and work with you on this. So thank you again.
Thank you. Debbie Hack, followed by Junice Low.
My name is Debbie Hack. I really appreciate the opportunity to visit with you, mayor, council, new councilman, and city staff. My name is Debbie Hack. I reside at 305 Old York Road. With the election behind us, I would like to offer a few observations to you all, and you'll just need to indulge me for about a minute and a half. First, my dad worked very hard to provide my sisters and me with a good education. We responded in a variety of ways, the importance of family, the importance of career, the importance of community service, some combination of all these values shaped each of us. My path led me to a 25-year career in the five-star international hotel business and a second career in the retail ATM business. I made Irving my home during these decades, and it's not just where I chose to fly out of. I'd like to think that my credentials in the hospitality industry led me to my appointment on the CVB board. And then during COVID, I was very bored, as we all were. I enrolled in OU's Economic Development Program. I personally funded to the tune of $12,000 or $15,000 all of the courses that they took, and I passed every one, and I loved everyone. I believe this education and my hours, hours of visible devotion led me to the appointment on the P&amp;Z Commission. So imagine my surprise when the council received a letter from a fellow Irving resident that indicated I was conflicted and should have abstained from the PUD 6 vote due to a conflict of interest. I guess my hospitality industry had nothing to do with my vote. Imagine my further surprise when it was suggested that my ATM business would benefit from the Sands Corporation. Clearly, the individual that wrote the letter knew nothing about the retail ATM business. Then in our marathon P&amp;Z meeting, my virtue was questioned. I was accused of being naive, influenced, manipulated, insincere, uneducated, supportive of human trafficking, not protective of women, and more. These were not my words. These words, thank you, these words came from my fellow Irving residents. I don't like to have to defend myself, but I chose tonight to come and speak out loud because I did not want to add to the last 90 days of discordant noise about the PUD 6 project. I waited until tonight. So this is why I'm really here tonight. I really feel like I've earned the right to stand in front of you. I have earned the right to tell you what I think about the last 90 days. So my real message is this. I expect my city council to put the divisiveness of this election behind us. I wish that they will treat city staff as well as boards and commissions with respect. I will be watching you in the coming months, every one of you. I expect you to act civilly. I expect you to do the right thing in the public interest of everyone in Irving. I expect you to get to know me. I guarantee we have a lot more in common than you might suspect. And don't just accuse your fellow residents of things you know nothing about. I get to know Irving. I know I have. I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. Junice Low, followed by Kimberly and Darnell Chestnut.
Good evening, mayor, city council members, and members of City of Irving. Hi, my name is Junice Low. I'm the owner of For Our Gymnastics in downtown Irving. I'm a homeschool mom of three girls and a chosen daughter, and I run a business that serves hundreds of families in our city of Irving. My husband and I moved to Irving 10 years ago, but we believe in this community. We started For Our Gymnastics to help girls grow in confidence, character, and strength. But we are facing a serious and dangerous problem, chronic homelessness, public indecency, and safety threats to our students. We had people urinate, defecate, and expose themselves behind our building while classes are in section. I have seen it by myself with my daughters while we were walking back. We had homeless individuals walk into our facility, try to talk to our little girls, and even linger to watch them while they are in their leotards. It is completely inappropriate, and it is not safe. Parents are asking if they should stop coming. Our staff is on high alert every evening, and it's not right. We are doing good work. We are creating jobs, and we are building kids up, but we are being left to fight this alone. We need your help. Regular police patrols, clear trespassing reinforcement, a commitment to protecting businesses that serve Irving. This isn't about being unkind. We care about people in need, but the safety of, the safety of our children has to come first. We are not just asking for help. We are asking you to protect the future of Irving. But not, last but not the least, Irving Police Camera has been a huge helpful, and the moment it goes away, we can see the difference. They come back and do the same thing. Thank you so much.
Kimberly and Darnell Chestnut.
So good evening, everyone. I'm Kimberly, and this is Darnell Chestnut, and we are at 618 North Delaware here in Irving, and we're here to talk about code enforcement. We know that the city just spent millions of dollars rehabbing our street, adding sidewalks, and refixing the sewage and everything that we had. However, there are some issues with code enforcement with dilapidated vehicles, trailers not being used that are on properties, and now that you guys have spent the money and invested in that area and trees and everything, we've submitted multiple things online through the tools that the city has provided, but we haven't seen any changes. I can't understand how some of these people are living in some of these houses. The number of vehicles, the occupancy, I just, I can't see how this continues. And so we're here to speak because we've been in this area for two and a half years. We love Irving. We heard Irving had the strongest code enforcement, but we haven't seen that on our streets. And with you guys investing the amount of money that you did in our neighborhood, we're asking you to step it up and make sure that the rest of our neighborhood is like other parts of Irving. Do you want anything else?
You know, at one time, I was looking at doing some development in Irving. I was looking at buying up some properties and building some new homes, and because of the code enforcement, I'm just not understanding it right now. It would look like it would be a negative investment, because as of right now, we put in multiple requests for two and a half years. I'm not saying that you guys are not doing anything, because I've seen code enforcement go up and down the street, but whether they're doing something or not, I can't see it. I mean, I've seen dilapidated trailers when I drive in at night. I see furrow cats living up under them, cats everywhere. Nothing's being done.
One minute left.
So, I mean, we would appreciate if we could stand on code enforcement, because people that spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on new homes, I think it would be nice for us to be able to live in a community that we all can respect. Because when we have friends that come over and visit, the first thing they say, "Man, what's going on with those houses over there? That's a eyesore. I can't believe y'all live over here." That's bad when we have friends and family that come and say that, especially for the millions of dollars that were spent on the infrastructure there. I talked to some of the city engineers that was there. They said, "Yeah, man, keep putting in, keep reporting, keep reporting, and something will get done." Nothing's happened. It's not a complaint, it's observation. We would appreciate any assistance we could get. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kimberly and Darnell?
Yes.
Thank you so much for coming down. Really do appreciate your sharing your thoughts. What I'd like to do is in back, Shane, if you could, raise your hand. Right behind you is Shane Diller. He is our code enforcement director. I'd like for him to step aside with you if you have a few moments right now, get your information, and we'll make sure we continue to follow up with you, and he can provide you some more information on what we have been doing, and you can provide some feedback as well, and we'll continue to monitor the situation. So if you want to get with Shane right now, we'd be happy to help you out.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
I do apologize for my dress. This was a last-minute thing coming. My wife said at 11:00. Hey, they have a meeting today. Because I'm normally not in town or working.
We'll take you anywhere you want to come.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the consent item. We've been asked per the work session to pull item number 18 and vote on that separately. So if there's nothing else to be pulled, I'd entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. And it passes unanimously. The next, and the item that was pulled is number, item number 18. I would entertain a motion or discussion on the item number 18. I'll make a motion to approve. We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Would you please vote? And it passes six to three with one abstention. The, that brings us to item number 18, which is a resolution approving consulting agreement between the city of, oh, that's what we just voted on. The next item on our agenda is our zoning cases. We have one zoning case this evening. If you wish to speak, please stand, and our city secretary will swear you in.
Is anybody going to speak? If so, raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that all statements which you will make tonight to the city council of the city of Irving will be the truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
We had very good discussion on this this afternoon. Does any of the council members have any questions of the applicant?
Motion for approval.
We have a motion for approval in a second. Would you please vote? And it passes unanimously. That brings us to our appointments, a resolution selecting mayor pro tem and deputy mayor pro tem. Brad.
My final act, maybe. No, it's my pleasure. I move to appoint John Block as mayor pro tem and Mark Croninwet as deputy mayor pro tem.
We have a motion in a second. Would you please vote? And that brings us nine to zero and brings us to the end of our agenda. Just before we leave, I want to just thank Brad for all his time and effort that he has spent with us over the last three, few years, and everything that he has brought has spent with us over the last three, few years, and everything that he has brought to the table. He's always a very thoughtful and insightful individual who looks at our cases with detail and does his homework, checks out the things that we're voting on, the things that we're looking at, goes the extra mile within his ability to look at how projects can be looked at differently, visiting with applicants, making sure that we have the best product as possible. Also for his service on the Regional Transportation Council. Brad's been a great voice and someone that, as a leader, and someone that the other RDC members look up to as well, as someone with the ability to understand the complex issues that face the Regional Transportation Council, which includes the 16 counties and 8 million people that live in this area. So Brad, thank you very much for your commitment and for everything that you've done, and we appreciate your service. We know that you're still going to be in Irving. We know that you're still going to be available for those things that we can work on, and I know you have some passion, things that you want us to continue to work on as well. So, thank you very much. Dennis.
Yeah, I just want to concur with what the mayor said, Brad. I've had the opportunity to serve with you for a lot of years, and I really appreciate what you've done and being able to serve with you. I will tell you, I think you got one more thing you've got to do next Tuesday, so we'll see you then.
No further comments. We'll stand adjourned.